Meeting today is Thursday, November sixth, twenty twenty five, approximately nine AM. Would you please stand and pray. Heavenly Father, thank you for this day, beautiful day. Thank you for this wonderful opportunity to gather and conduct kind of business to work. We ask for your guidance. We ask for your will. We ask for your patience. We ask for all of this in your son, Jesus' name. Amen.
Legislaters. From the United States of America into the Republic or which it saves, qualification, identity, physical, liberty, justice, rule.
Or I call for approval of our vote for approval of the agenda. If there are any changes that need to be made from council or staff.
No.
Your word, Mr. Chairman.
Right. Motion, Mr. Searls, second official, agenda, any discussion on, or call it to vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. Say aye, aye, both are known. All right, public announcements, presentations, and awards. Do we have any public announcements presentation? Good morning.
That for this morning's share. Well, I got a press conference over in Tallahassee trying to go get us some money, so.
I saw you on TV this morning.
I figured I'd dress up. Two days in a row. Not very happy about that. I'm here today to present two checks to the county commission for unattended funds for fiscal year twenty four, twenty five. So for the sheriff's office, we'll be returning an amount of seventy seven thousand, thirty four dollars and forty three cents. And for the E O C, we're going to return an amount of twenty eight thousand, three hundred ninety six dollars and fifty one cents. We appreciate y'all's support. We appreciate you. You've spent it very frugal and like a retirement we don't need.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, but Christie, thank you for everything you're doing.
Great job.
Yeah, this Michelle, no.
We like money.
Good morning, commissioners. So thank you for allowing me a moment just to speak as your supervisor of elections. I just want to begin by expressing my appreciation for your continued support for our office and our mission to conduct elections that are fair, accurate, and transparent. Today, I'm pleased to return thirty five thousand, three hundred ninety dollars and fifty eight cents in unspent funds from our fiscal year twenty four, twenty five budget. As of last year, when we returned approximately just over fifty grand, this reflects our continued commitment to responsible financial management and stewardship of taxpayer dollars. Every dollar we manage represents trust our community places in this office. Returning these funds is one way to demonstrate our accountability and dedication to both fiscal prudence and public confidence. So thank you again for your support.
What was that number? Thirty five, thirty.
Thirty five, three ninety.
What are we doing with this hundred forty thousand dollars? That's fantastic. Roll on, this year.
I'm sure we can find something productive.
Okay, any other public announcement, presentation, or awards? Right, moving into citizens' requests and input on non-agenda items. Howard, please step forward.
I'm just, we're good news.
They put name and address, yes, for the record.
Driftin Woods Road, Montesum, one, three, two, three, four, four. Been living here fifty one years. We built our house in the Tinsley. My dad was a builder. I helped, and I'm not a builder. It's my vacation place. It's my home sweet home. It's where I drink coffee in the morning. It's where I sit beside my hero on the porch. It means so much to me. They don't have words. There's a monster sitting out beside me, and I've just been talking to my commissioner. Thank you. Thank you for coming to me. Thank you, Austin, for always listening to me. I haven't slept for days. I'm sorry. Did you look at what happened in Kentucky over the weekend? Have anybody seen that? Well, a plane full of jet fuel, full of all kinds of bad stuff in it to go to Hawaii. Slammed into the outer industrial parts of the Mohammed Ali Airport in local bulk Kentucky. One of the first things it did is slammed through propane tanks. It burns and burns. They don't know how many people are dead yet. Still couldn't know. We cannot look and say, is this going to happen? Is this not going to happen? But is it probable? If you ever looked at Traverse, Florida thirteen years ago, a propane facility blew up. It was extremely bad. Fifteen people died in the first blow. Nothing left of them. Couldn't even pick them up off the ground. Another night, went to the hospital, scarred for life. Propane is a heavy liquid. I've been doing a lot of research because it's just kind of pushed on the apple. Really don't like propane. I'm a drinking person. Give me electricity every time. Is dangerous. Mr. Salisbury, Chief Salisbury, he moved from state fire. He went around the county, the fire jobs, after he saw the monster sitting in the sun. Then came back out and he looked where the tank is, my houses, two hundred and fifty feet from my front door. You can't, the trees won't even cover it up when you walk out. Now, I have a nice. Planning commissioners do not run our county. County commissioners. Lawyers do not run. Commissioners. My commission. There's no safety plan according to the National Association Protection for this. You just said you got back how much money from the different departments. Thank you, God, for these wonderful leaders. One truck costs more. Costs more than that. You don't have the, we don't have, we, we, that's a part of this. We don't have the capacity to fight this. Like, if it was down. The tank sitting right in front of children playing sign. That was ironic that it ended up that way. And then another one a few feet away. I have nieces and nephews that come and visit me. There are a lot of hunters out there right now. There's a lot of deer, a lot of turkey go into people's safe. And hop forth, the hunters, I don't hunt. I don't want them to hunt in my backyard because it's sort of a refuge for the few deer that come up and look at my husband. That love you because they know he's not for shooting. Somewhere along the way, this got messed up. Now, I love, I don't hardly know most of them. But also, you know, I love them. And your dad is one of the sweetest men I've ever met.
Thank you.
My cellar is close knit, but we followed along. I will clean air, clean water. And I want to go back to the damage that propane will cause. It burn your face right off your body. You won't have any hands left or anything to walk with. Your lungs will be, it clings to every part in you. Just yesterday, a tanker came in and was filling up southern propane up there. My daughter was standing there and because the buffers all been cut down, everything is coming through. She was standing by the mailbox and she had it as not that. That's how fast it trains and the wind blows across there. And when hurricanes come through here and they mostly come right over us, that feeling is a, everything rolls on from it fast and gets wet. I still have some broken things I'm fixing. We're not what you call a community people. But we have what we want. We have what we want. And I have the word. I have a stream that flows in my house. It's spring fed by the Lake Mississippi Foundation and yes, have. Well, Tom Green and all of the E P came out in two thousand and nine and walked that whole area with me. And all the way from the creek, all the way back behind the other shelters and there's several sinkholes. I have to be careful because of spores and you fall into the hunters know this. So the very water tower that you've got sitting up for the county is being fed by that same water system. Three, four wells on property are fed by now. Propane gets into water, remember it's heavier than hair, so it, it, everybody thinks propane is a little mist in the air. It's not. I found out it is not. And my daughter couldn't come today because she's so sick. It happened to her yesterday. Commissioners. I'm asking you to please fix this. Remove the tank. It's our only way out of there. There's swamp all the way around us. There's no road access. There's not, y'all have money for a freeway. And then I, I would like to see build up the fire department period. The first responders, paramedics, the fire department, the sheriff. Just build them up.
Sure. Yeah, I think, thank you for your time, maybe earlier before the meeting, Ms. Howard. And I gave you my word. I was going to peel this, pull some layers back and see what we can come up with. I'd love to, you know, I know our last meeting got messed up, but anyway, but I'd love to meet with the chief. He brought up some points and I think we need to, if we're responsible board, like I said, I've been, the chairman assured you last time, this, this never came across. This board never voted for these propane tanks and, and so that's partially why, you know, free enterprise chooses to build industrial parks because you don't, you just pull a permit and do what you want to. So, but we'll check with the chief. I'll get with the county manager, make sure, just see what you can do. I just, you know, I appreciate you bringing our attention. I think you brought up some good points that we need to look at and and I'll give you my, my word. We'll move forward. We'll see what you can do.
I want your word that that monster is going to get out of my driveway.
We'll see what we can do. Yes, ma'am.
That has to go. That's a health issue. You know, everybody's worried about getting sued. But how many relatives that I have that are going to come back if they're going to kill us all over the United States?
Can you get with, with Mr. Wheeler and see what potential options the county would have possibly to mitigate this issue, whether it be enforcing buffer to be put back or to, you know, extend the tank off of the, you know, this turkey setback wise. But, but as it being an environmental, I almost knew this, an environmental or a health issue, you know, use whatever strings you can pull to, you know, make that happen without us getting into a lawsuit that we were for sure going to lose.
Sure, let me have it to you, staff, a little.
Thank you.
I have a suggestion.
All right, let's hear it.
And if Mr. Bush had come to y'all and discussed this with you like a planning commissioner supposed instead of doing what he did. You know, Texas Hill said no. That's where that tank came from. Originally came from Danny up in Cairo, I imagine, of Miss Coats. But it, it came from over there by Texas Hill and had have little cars with the little lights to safely get to where it was. Okay, so he had addressed you instead of going on.
And, and it was all within the confines of how our government is structured. So he, he would, no, no rules or red tape were cut for him to be able to do that. He simply abided by what is in our code. And, you know, that's the discussion I had with you. That, that makes it really difficult.
But you don't review yourself. You, as a, as a planning commissioner, you don't review your own business. That's just common knowledge.
I would, I'm assuming he was.
He reviewed his own business to put it there.
Yeah, we've had this conversation, Miss Nita, to make these types of accusations.
I don't make it an accusation. I'm, I am talking about what's happening.
And, and.
Okay, so, so when you get into a planning commission, if you're a planning commissioner and you are planning to put something into a place, it's not an accusation.
Here's where we are. No, because we had this discussion. If you can show us where the red tape was cut or where a corner was cut or where he did something he wasn't supposed to do, then you, then bring that to us. Don't stand here and make these types of accusations because that doesn't help anyone, right? We've had this conversation, Miss Nita.
Let's go back. Well, excuse me, concept. Let's go back to the point that there is a probably eighteen thousand pound tank. Back.
Yes, and, and we all just agree that we're going to have this council.
All right, you're going to have your council work out, and I appreciate that. But I'm counting on you.
Yeah, and, and I said this months ago when the truck stop was going in. If there was, you know, with the county, we got sued because we didn't allow them to do this, but there's some parcel down here that when you buy certain pieces of parcel, you don't have to ask a bunch of questions. It didn't have to go, those, this, this, this individual didn't have to go to the planning commission or the county commission because he bought industrial park property and put it in there. That's why I said it never, there was no backroom deals or no red tape. Nobody cut any corners. We didn't help. Yeah, okay.
All right, so that one. Okay, so I have a suggestion. You know how you, all the tanks are gathered up and put, you know, some over on too long canyon, southern, and now this eighteen thousand pound one at my front door. Why don't we work with these people? Put it down in caps on all of that four lane highway down that area in the middle of fifty acres. Because that's what facilities like that need to be. The plume reaches, and, and I apologize, Commissioner. I'm sorry. What I'm trying to say is that I have been forced to do something in my later years that I'm having difficulty with.
And we're, we're very sorry. And I think there's a single person on this board that doesn't want to help your situation out, but we've got to be able, to be able to help your situation out. So.
So.
So I think we've got a plan going forward, Miss Nita. Please come back to the next meeting and we will, we will continue this discussion as to whatever updates we, we can get.
I'm counting.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for your time. Thank you. Thank you, Miss Nita. All right. Any other citizens' requests and input on non-agenda items today? Be ready to consent.
We have.
Who do I have on line?
Mr. Forehand.
All right, Mr. Forehand, the floor is yours.
Can you hear?
Mrs. Fuller.
Yes, my phone is not working. Internet is not working. So, um, this is Cindy Forehand, Attorney Anderson Road. And I just have a question and a comment. Is it the policy in this county and the position of current board members that laws are only enforced when someone complains, specifically animal control and code enforcement?
Council, from my understanding, that is true? That's accurate?
That is accurate, yeah. And that's actually per state laws, while code enforcement is required to get complaints during the process.
Okay, so laws are not unilateral across this county. They can pick and choose who they target.
Are you, are you asking the board to actively go out and seek code violations? Because that's not the business that we're in.
No, I'm asking what the policy and the position in this county is currently.
I think council just stated that it's, it's aligned with state code that if there is a complaint made or filed to our code enforcement, they go and inspect it. Otherwise, our code enforcement does not go riding around town looking for code violations.
So if somebody makes a complaint, so if somebody makes a complaint and they're doing the same exact thing, it's okay for code enforcement to come and write code or write a citation against somebody else when this other person has multiple code violations.
I would encourage that person to call code enforcement and report the code violations.
Yeah, well, all of that has already been done. I just wanted to know the position of the current board members on that.
It's in line with state statute. So every county in the state of Florida should have a very similar approach.
Yeah, I, I'm familiar with that. So also, I'm waiting on the county manager to send digital, a digital copy, copy of her records to send copies out for review to see if this board will address the county manager intentionally ignoring county and state laws. So whenever I get a digital copy of those, I will send it to you all.
Thank you.
And that's all I have.
Thank you so much. All right. Any other citizens' requests and put along agenda items, audience online, we're moving on to consent agenda. I would invite a version to make. Proof consent, I have a motion of permission wide, second permission random. Any discussion for the board on this limited consent agenda? They're being known. Any from the audience, anybody online? Right, they're being known, called to vote, all in favor, consent, raise your right hand, say aye, aye, aye. Say, anybody opposed, say no. Are you on? You, right. They're moving into general business. Item A, standard insurance language update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our insurance, C H P, does not recognize common law marriage or any of, anything of that sort. And, but our dental and vision insurance does. And so we're putting in place that all dependents must be verified and have a relationship with the employee through verifying through either the birth certificate or marriage certificate or some sort of legal document stating that they are a legal dependent, just to help any potential confusion in the future. And it'll be a something that'll be in our personnel policy as well. So everybody knows and there isn't any confusion on that.
Okay, I've got the motion in a second. I've got some questions because I was kind of confused as to why this was even on there. So is this going to lower our premiums with the standard by not having?
No, it doesn't change anything with the money. All it is, is clarifying for all employees that will be working.
But from what I understand, C H P is, they're, they're very adamant that, you know, if you say somebody is your spouse, when you check that box on the application that they are indeed your spouse, they do that for a reason because of the domestic partnerships and it lowers your premium. You could, we could actually have negotiate with C H P to allow domestic partnerships, but it would increase our bottom line premium. So my question is, if we're doing this with a standard, how come we can't get any kind of?
The, the C H P already doesn't recognize it. That's what our, our policy is with them. So this is just making it the same for both so that nobody gets confused reading one policy or over the other. The county is taking a stand of all dependents need to be verified.
Does it seem redundant to me that like you're going through the application and you check somebody is your spouse? You, you understand the difference between your spouse and a domestic relationship or partnership, right?
Well, it is twenty twenty five and there's a lot of people that live differently and, yeah. Well, I know that. That's what.
Let's get back to common sense and face. So if you don't understand that somebody is not your spouse and you check that box, then, then you're either probably not competent to work for the county or you're a crook. I mean, to me, it's, it's pretty simple. So I, I'm, I guess I'm just confused. To me, this is kind of insulting to the board that we have to even discuss something like this.
It's more just to clean up language because what you find is common sense isn't always what somebody else finds as common sense. So I just want to make sure that we have that something.
Is somebody your spouse or not? And when I think of that, I don't think of my boyfriend's my spouse or my girlfriend's my spouse. But I mean, that's, that's, we need to get back to the basics. Let's get back to common sense. If you don't understand what a spouse is, then you probably don't need to work for Jefferson yet.
Just to, just to clarify, the standard, which is the county's vision and dental policy, they currently allow domestic partners to be covered.
Right. And when you're going through the application process, I mean, we're saying, oh, this is, it's confusing whether or not they're your spouse. That's not confusing at all. It's very straightforward and.
Yeah, I haven't seen the standards applications, but I assume because they allow for domestic partners to be covered, it's a different question. And I ask you whether it's the spouse that's, it's spouse or domestic partner. So this will clean that out. This will remove that domestic partner eligibility. So it's like Shannon said, it'll be.
To me, this is like, so if we do have people in that position and the standard does allow for that and it's not an increased cost to the county, why wouldn't we leave that window open for folks that want to put their boyfriend or girlfriend or their kids on their policy? Why would we cut that out? That's what I, I'm just, I'm confused. Why would we cut that out?
It's a, it's a policy decision for the county to make. I think staff's position on this is that it makes sense to be consistent across the board. There was some confusion. I think because C H P does not allow domestic partnerships and because the vision and the dental policies did, I guess I'm just confused there. So this will just sort of make it standard across the board. But it is a policy decision for the board to make. If y'all want to leave the and dental policies, that's totally up to the board.
I just see.
Mr. Chairman.
You tell your employees, hey, you can do this for your health insurance, but your dental and vision, you can't, or vice versa, whatever it is. I just feel like this is very, very unnecessary.
Mr. Chairman.
It's, yeah, Clerk High Town.
Hey, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. Chairman, yes, sir. Regarding this, we knew C H P's stance on it. And so we wanted to be uniformed across the county where as the county attorney and the county manager have kind of alluded to that we just need to be consistent where, whether you're talking about your health insurance or standard dental or anything else, what qualifies as a legal spouse and a dependent? Because, because of what happened and the fact that we're dealing with the repercussions of that, we are verifying every new employee that comes in that they have to provide a if they put a spouse on their insurance, they have to provide documentation as well as if they put a dependent, they have to provide a birth certificate as you all did as well. So. If that helps to clear up anything.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. All right. So I've got a motion in a second. I've said what I want to say on it. Any further discussion from the board or the audience? All right, they're being known, call to vote, all in favor, raise your right hand, say aye, aye. All opposed, say no, no, passes for one. Thank you, guys. All right, moving on. Hurricane Helene reimbursement update.
I figured it's been a while and there's been some questions. So I just wanted to give y'all a quick update on where we are with hurricane debris and getting our reimbursement back. So in, as soon as the hurricanes happened, we submitted an expedited grant application to get reimbursed for our debris. And we were, the process was expedited. We received two point five million back right away from the state. And the remainder that's left from the debris pickup is still three point six million. So meaning the project was just over six million dollars. So we're waiting currently for that three point six million. This is in FEMA's hands currently. I, I can't say anything on why it's taking so long. It's just that's how they work. We did see some action at the end of September in, in trying to get this reimbursement. And then the government shutdown happened. So it slowed it down even further. So that's where that piece is. They had some questions that. So that's where that piece is. Um, they had some questions that our debris monitor has helped us answer. Uh, debris tech, they really have been um Johnny on the spot with answering questions. Um, so we really appreciate that. And then, of course, Ms. Christie, she's making sure that we keep everything up to date and keep it on the ball. So um I just wanted to make sure you all knew that. Um, and then uh after January uh twenty first, we were still picking up debris. So uh we had to submit another application. This was for the state. That was their deadline. I don't know if you all recall that conversation, but that was their deadline. So we um opened another application, which that one uh ended up costing a total of six hundred and eighty-two thousand. Um, this one, um, unlike the other one, had uh does not have a a normal waiver. So this one, we um are going to be submitting a waiver. Uh, we were able to get that from our representative with FDM. And so our our payback portion, the feds are covering seventy-five percent, the state's covering twelve and a half, and then we're supposed to cover twelve and a half. And that'll leave us around a hundred thousand to to owe towards that this project. Um, this waiver will go up to the governor. Uh, for approval. Um, that's just how this particular one happened. That's not um traditionally how that happens. But um I feel like we have a a good chance for it, but I did want to ask you all your thoughts. Because we've heard from our delegation on how they want us to have skin in the game. And it'd be awesome to ask for the whole amount. Um, and I feel like we probably should ask the governor for the whole amount, but I just wanted to get y'alls um. Feeling on, should we maybe ask the governor for seventy-five and we uh go ahead and put some skin in the game with the twenty-five thousand? So they that way he knows that, you know, we're part of this, the partnership.
This may be, no, this is extremely, to me, it really don't cloud hanging over the commission. And hopefully the skies will will clear. Um. So when you say submit that waiver to the governor's office, that's for the hundred thousand dollars that we're going to be potentially liable for. But there's there's still the possibility that that three point six million dollars doesn't ever get funded back to the county.
There's a possibility, but it's not likely. But like I I I did ask the commission, you know, if this is what we wanted to do. Um, Adaliah, we did get everything back. It was much faster. Um. No, it was the same process. Um, it was the same application. The only thing that was different between Adaliah and Helene was. Helene was followed or preceded by Debbie right before and uh we had a different company doing the actual pickup of the debris.
We put money on both of those earnings?
Yes. We just received the payback much faster on Adalian. Uh, right now, I'll just go back into general fund. Um.
So it's been, it's reclaimed and now can be used.
Yes. Yes. So that's the update. Ms. Christie has been um on top of them to make sure that we get everything going um. And keep it going. Uh, she's Johnny on the spot with that one. We've, yes, go ahead.
Last time this conversation was fifty thousand dollars, a hundred thousand.
Right.
Is that?
Well, before I, it was a guesstimation. I didn't, because we hadn't finished. That was in February, so it was, I, that was a guesstimation.
Questions on that too, with, you know, the private road deal, because that helped clean up private roads. Any any comment there, counsel?
Any comment as to what?
Being able to get that money back, with it being used the way it was.
Well, I think the private road stuff, that was a separate grant from FDM.
Well, now, about as far as debris pick up.
Um, so you you mean the debris pickup from the private roads, it was done at that time? So my understanding is that was specifically authorized by FEMA. Or that storm, so that should not be.
All right, any discussion from the board on it? Or close it out?
Do y'all have any input or opinion on the twenty-five or one hundred percent?
I would be the board on that, whatever you think that gives us the best chance to recoup the most amount of funds back to the county. If it takes some skin in the game, we still, like Commissioner White said. You know, that's a small price for those guys that have a good job. Uh, we're done. We got private roads done. Uh. It was just, we were all in that together, so whatever, I'm with the board on it, so. Are there anybody wrong at the governor's office asking for that money, you are?
I don't think so. I I'm not a hundred percent on that, of course. Um, I'm not in his office.
Better off using the slums that we got back and just.
I'd be fine, but I mean, we, we, I'd vote for it, I'd vote for it, pretty cheaper.
Yeah.
We didn't play that, never skin in the game, that's probably.
Okay, I guess I got confused. So are we going to ask for the waiver or not ask for the waiver?
We're just, I think it would be a um more problematic for us to ask for that money than to just. We're talking half a million dollars maybe, but a hundred thousand dollars, it's not ideal.
That helps. That makes life easier on me and Ms. Christie. So, thank you very much.
See, there's been census on that, but I think a vote, just to memorialize, that would be.
So I'm entertained. Motion from Commissioner Brown, second from Commissioner Searls, any discussion with the board, audience, board online? All in favor, raise your right hand, say aye. All opposed, say no. There, passing anyone, thank you. Wraps up general business. Mr. Clerk, you still on, you got anything for us?
No, sir. Nothing else today.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. See, you've got a hunter here, update.
Pretty good, there are a lot of, um, just a couple of updates. Uh, Wolf Creek Bridge is out of the bid right now for that bridge cleaning and repair. As soon as those bids go back, we'll work with Ms. Maddie and and get a solid review and get that under construction. Should be a pretty short construction period. Uh, we're also working with DOT right now, getting finalized the proposal for a little peanut face two. That should go up to bid, I imagine, end of the year-ish. I think, depends on when DOT will will let us go and give us the construction pretty quick, but. For that, everything's going good. Boston always finished up all the designs, so uh should be going up for construction first of the year. Y'all have anything to read?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you all for your email update.
Thank you, thank you.
And, yeah, thank you for your assistance on that, on that little abnormal, the citizen fund, uh, guardrail, but uh, thank you for.
Yeah, I get that done there. Absolutely, and uh, I'm gonna go back, hold the way on the way home and uh. Check out that guardrail where it's got hit since that new face construction. Thank y'all. I'm only just went off the road there. They had one of them big bucks in that high fence.
All right, counsel.
Nothing additional, Senator.
Thank you, Ms. Matthews.
Yeah, a couple of things, Mr. Chairman. Um, one is, uh, I think we'll be doing a budget amendment on the twentieth. Uh, I'll I'll still schedule it for a six o'clock um meeting, but um I I plan to have that done then. Um, I also think that we might potentially have a workshop beforehand on the twentieth. For economic development purposes to start that discussion, because we want to try to get that done as close to the beginning of the year as possible. So um I will get, I will let you know for sure if we end up having that that workshop. But um would you all be available for a workshop before the meeting on the twentieth? And then um the T-Mobile grant has closed. We only received one applicant. So uh we still will be scoring it, but I will get the committee together to. No, it's not. I don't remember what the name, James, I remember James, and I think there's a T, but I don't remember who, what they are. So um so there's that and that should be um for approval. Um, uh, that contract at the next meeting. The um two hundred and fifty year anniversary is coming up, you know, next year of the the country. And we um have been appro, the TDC has been approached by the committee that's trying to do uh. For our local committee trying to celebrate that. Um, they're looking at potentially trying to ask the county for some funds to help out with fireworks. Um, they're originally trying to to get some funds from TDC, which I'm not a hundred percent sure is allowable use, but. And I'm not asking you for money or anything like that. I just want to put the thought in your mind of, is this something that you guys might want to support? Um, I I know that fireworks, everybody will be doing them, but I know we also have a reputation because of Mr. Bullock. Always doing such a good job and then our American Legion, because they would always do the the play and everything beforehand of really commemorating the whole. Uh, meaning of the Fourth of July. So uh we could, uh, I always see a lot of people asking, so. Um, uh, just uh food for thought um at a later time. And um our impact fees, uh, we should be, and correct me if I'm wrong, Evan, we should be hearing those. Uh, or a an update on them on the twentieth, is that right?
Yes, the consultant is playing the beer for that, right?
Yes, I believe so. And so they'll be giving us an update on that. Um, so that'll be coming to a close here soon. And then the the big fun news for me is that I have hired a deputy manager. So um his name is Ron Russo. You'll meet him in December. His first day is December first. Um, he is currently, well, he just resigned, but um he's currently the deputy manager in Hernando County. And he was the deputy manager in Lake County and then has filled in with a bunch of experience with um with Department of Ag. He worked for FDLE for a long time. He actually lived up here in the Balm community. Um, you know, uh. Few years, kind of way back, but um he's worked for Ag. Uh, he was up at the state or the. U.S. Capitol for a little while. He just has, he's kind of seems to be one of those jack of all trades, so I'm, he has experience. So that's the part I'm excited about. So um I look forward to introducing him to you all um come December. Yes.
Please remind me this isn't the management candidate.
Oh, yeah, no, I think he's leaving it on purpose, so there's that, but um but yes. Yes, and that is everything.
Mr. Clerk?
Oh, yes, everyone, two things, Ms. Maddie, on me and Red, you sent us a share of the pitches of the bathroom, one of Portopos. Down there at the Roost Palace, and it looked really good. The door was open, the doors got scheduled on yet, and the people was not having one respect. Can we do the same at Was this river?
I think so. And actually, that was Ms. Christie that sent that, but I'll make sure that we get with them and um get that done.
Bathroom on pitch for Roost Palace looks way better. The port of the school than the one right there at Was this river? And even the it is my brother. The other day I had a question on there, Mr. Jeff, it's for the bathroom system that approached me about beyond the, I think that's all. I've been near persons nursery, Westlake Road, right? That's where the birds are at and everything. That road, when you keep going all the way. Um, down, it could lead to Lake Mexico.
Oh, um Hopkins um Landing Road?
Hopkins Landing, the old church, well, out there near, um, okay, let's see where, uh, Frostburg on the way, where's that, the Westlake though, right? Going down, and you got uh the church there, you only see a church on that there. And you're all relying to the end of it, and the branches have the nursery right there, right? You you know what I'm saying, right? And that road there, I'm told that if you, if we were cleaning up with it.
I think that's Hopkins Landing Road, because the one off of ninety, I'm pretty sure, uh, from my understanding.
What you did, you're trying to dog, bird dogs with it, plantations are there, not there. But I'm just saying, going straight when you go, uh.
I have to look.
Oh, okay, there, I'm told that you can, and I went up in there, but I could get up in too far. They were saying we would clean it up and folks would have access to the lake on that end.
I think we just have to verify that it's our row.
Add up, guys, folks has been cleaned up, they can go fish up there from that end.
Mm-hmm. No, I I think it'd be great to open a a a some sort of uh landing on our side, you know, where. And I I, because I'm, my husband used to bass fish all the time. We'd fish like Mikasuki and they'd actually have. Uh, because it could be an economic development thing, actually, because they have tournaments that come and so people will come to the other side on reefs. And they would do their tournaments, they, you know, and then they'll stay and they'll spend some money at the restaurants or whatever and. Um, so I mean, they're not, and actually, sometimes they would sleep here if they had a a good enough tournament. Because uh they have to get up at safe light, you know, and that's early, so you might even get some beds and heads, but uh or heads and beds. I always say that backwards. Um, but you know, that I do think it's a good economic development thing, but I always heard that that side, because there's so many plantations there. That they didn't want people infringing on that, because they were concerned about people wandering off the path. So that'll, that can just be something I'll I'll look into further. Um, because I do think it's good to have a a boat uh landing. On our side, um. Oh, okay.
Take credit for it, especially right there at where Ford Chapel, where Hopkins Landing is right there. And he was saying, we could probably take some of that pot, one, about three minutes. That's just sitting there and maybe we could build it up as a formal boat landing. And a fishing, you know, retreat area. And, you know, that that's something to you, we could do, and as you mentioned, but really not about that.
Right. Okay, well, we'll definitely look into it and we'll have to see how much um in the way of land that we have down there as well. Yes, sir.
Wish Graham?
Uh, step two, um, do we have any update on the uh agreement for. Home schoolers for use of the old jail?
Not at the moment, yeah.
Um, and any of the on that, um. Uh, supply.
Um, the uh appraisal came back and so now I'll just, I can just put it out to bed. I'm working with Kirsten on that. And actually, I have two other parcels that I'll be bringing before y'all to surplus as well. Um, ones in the city limits and the other ones um actually out there off of Forest Court. Um, that we, they're just parcels that we're sitting on that there, we don't need them, so we might as well.
Which one is this?
It's off of East Clark Road. I think the address is twelve forty-three East Clark.
What about the old gas station, um?
Uh, there, I have to get with the people that are helping us close it out. I don't really know what's going on. Yeah.
That's it's turned into a real eyesore.
No, I know. I I noticed that the other day. The um state, I think, was supposed to be out there Monday and Tuesday of last week, I think it was. And I was going to meet him out there and I forgot, but um, yeah. Yes. We don't want to add to the north side.
It's ours.
Yeah.
We either need to start taking care of it or do something with it, tear it down. I don't know what, but get with counsel and try to explore the options, but that's been.
Yes.
I saw it for a long time. So we did get the tanks out there, correct?
Yes, um, but I think that they found like some contamination in the dirt, but I thought that they took out all the dirt that was contaminated. And so I just have to verify that and if we can close it, then I'm, then we'll just close it and then we'll surplus it. But if we can't close it, for whatever reason, because we have to keep monitoring, yeah.
Then we look, might as well, but if we can't surplus it, go ahead and tear it, it'll just be an empty lot.
Yeah.
We'll just figure out, I can try to put it out the bit, tear that down, because I know it's a hazard, like it is.
Yeah, no, that sounds good. Thank you.
Like to Ms. Commissioner Graham's point about the surplus with us getting into this economic development uh board. And then re-hooking up with Department of Commerce and Economic Development. I would. Ask that we slow down a little bit, because basically what these economic development boards are going to do is they're going to open up a door for us to. Try to invite businesses in, so I know we did that with Development Gump Shrimp Place and that piece of property. But to me, if we held on to something like that and as we get into this economic development task force. We could potentially use that to our advantage to try to bring in a a business that. We all think is going to be a sustainable, good type business and. Not some internet hodgepodge type building or or business that's that's coming in here, not. Providing any jobs for our for our people. Something to think about, I I would hope that you all would think about that as we do venture into this uh economic development task force. There are lots of opportunities where basically you've got a big pool of businesses that are looking for places to relocate and. We as a board can get kind of picky and go, hey, that'd be nice, it'd be to bring some jobs and it fits our footprint here. Let's try to bring that in. And I get free, free market, free enterprise, open it up, but it is our industrial park and um. Like that, we should, we should use that to our advantage, like I said, as we venture into this new or refurbished. Task force.
I mean, I I that's great. I just had, um, actually, uh, it's a cool person that has been interested in in the lot. They actually own a a business and, you know, they've just been aware that it was on the surplus list, so. But I understand, I think that's great to take all those factors into consideration. But I understand, I think that's great to take all those factors into consideration.
Anything else, Commissioner?
Yes, thank you.
I'll go here. Mr. Service.
Uh, yeah, I just got one, one comment, just take a brief, Mr. Chair. A couple of weeks ago, uh, Mr. Wheeler, our planning zone official, uh, kind of boiled it down on a fifth grade level for me, made it real understandable about how the legislature is taking home rule away uh from this board. Um, anyway, I've had some conversations with the local attorneys retired and had some really neat points. Um, and just at the beginning of this meeting, I had a, you know, I'm setting some time, we're able to get with our council, but just wanted to just bounce it off this board and get the temperature that, you know, if we don't do something now, um, you know, we're we're probably never gonna do anything, but I just wanted to let you know, it's gonna be bringing some things back, some options, just, you know, and encourage each and every one of you to maybe take it from your different angle, see what there is to do out there to try to protect home rule, because I I was, if you're like me, you were pretty devastated with that comment, that um, you know, the the legislature can take how this county operates right out of the way from us five that the people put here. Um, and that gentleman made a comment to me, and I shared it with Evan this morning. A hundred people in this room gets way more done than a thousand stand up at the Capitol, and I just, you know, dawned on me, I said, you're right. So anyway, so I just want to let y'all know, you know, be thinking about it, if you know somebody or what, but we probably all really need to, you know, to be together on this. Uh, and it's something we can do, but we're gonna, I'm gonna start peeling some layers back. I just want to let, you know, the the board know that I was, you know.
Ms. Maddie, did you, we had a conversation, there's there's a group out there that's putting together uh some some language to combat, especially the S D one eight, which was most devastating for us. Um, what's it, what, what was that group?
I don't remember now that you're asking me. Um, but I know that the Florida Planning Association is also pushing back on it as well.
Like CFS United in in writing a letter sport and saying, hey, look. Right, I mean, that's, you know, just one step and probably a thousand that need to be taken. They're not, they're not going. That bill was not designed for Hernandez and uh the mall counties. It's designed for these little spots like we got right here, and they know that was a backdoor way to get in these uh developments, and I'm telling you, it's kind of, it's like. Was it you telling me? There was a House of, or no, Representative Tanner, someone's made the comment that we've got too many counties in the state and we should just consolidate. And you know what that means for us? Straight to lead on.
Yeah.
They're they're not backing off of it. They're not resent, they're they're going full steam ahead, and it's not slowing down. So I agree, I mean, I think we can do anything we can. Thank you for your thoughts on that, and uh, maybe that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
I mean, all of them, thank, Chief, good job. We got a new ambulance, they look fantastic.
And just a quick, we can add, have our lobbyists do that. Sorry, work on the planning stuff. That can be one of their priorities. Just keep that in mind.
Thank you. I've been chairman of the two, which are. Thank you.